All right, thank you, everyone. We have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:16 PM. And that will turn us over here to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, January the 10th, 2024. It is 6:16 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, January 12th at 1:00 PM and Monday, January 15th at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrokable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. The city council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice, agenda item, as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Heger prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Sunin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Our Vice Mayor will read that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Meowak, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resilience, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to call on Councilmember Spies to help lead the pledge.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. And I'd like to note here for our colleagues and for the public, our intent is for Item 8.2 to be continued to the regular meeting of January 24, 2024, as we are in the middle of a tentative settlement agreement. So with that, I'd like an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3 of the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, the Presentations and Announcements. And that one presentation is Item 4.1, the Youth Commission Semiannual Update.
All right, wonderful. Let's welcome our youth commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Femi Omotesho, Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office and advisor to the Elk Grove Youth Commission. The youth commissioners are here to present their semiannual update. The commissioners continue to amaze me with their passion for serving their community. I'd like to thank our historian, Manjot, for putting this together, the slides together. Thank you so much, Manjot. I'll now turn it over to the commissioners for their presentation. To begin the presentation, I want to introduce Ayla Buno, the Chair for this year.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ayla Buno, a senior at Franklin High School and also Chair of the Youth Commission. The Commission has a mix of amazing new programs and ones that we are bringing back from past years that we can't wait to share with you. We would appreciate if you would help in reaching out to the community to participate in all our events. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Avash Chaudhary, a 15-year-old sophomore attending Consumnis Oaks and the Communications Officer. On August 3rd, 2023, the Youth Commission had a retreat. We didn't form a quorum, but we had a conversation with the City Manager and former Youth Commissioner, Ethan Lipsy.
Good evening, Council. My name is Adia Nelson, and I am a junior at Elk Grove High School. For the Brown Act, the City Clerk gave us training on the Brown Act and guided us on a meeting and interaction protocols for the commissioners. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cassie Parsons, and I'm a current senior at Pleasant Grove High School and also the Vice Chair of the Commission this year. We are really excited for our next upcoming event, which is Path to Positivity. This will be our second year having this event. This year is going to look a little bit different. It's going to be held at the Wackford Ballroom from 12 to 4 on February 24th. And there will be guest speakers, team-building activities, food, music, all sorts of stuff. And if you would like to sign up, there's a link on our website and on our social media platforms.
Hi, I'm Pratham. I'm a junior at Franklin High School. And so the City Youth Forum is going to take place on March 21st at District 56. And we want our Elk Grove youth to be able to meet with inspiring city leaders and learn a thing or two. And it's also going to be an opportunity for them to network with other professionals and other youth. And we want to thank all you for making yourself available for this event, and we're super excited for it.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I'm a junior at Pleasant Grove High School, and I'm the Commission's Secretary. This year, we plan to have Family Fun Day on April 13th from 12 to 4 at the Old Town Plaza. And it will be similar to the previous years and include carnival games, music, food trucks, and base painting. But this year, we also plan to have a magician come and perform.
Good evening. My name is Adrian. I'm a junior at Elk Grove High School. And for our Food Drive and Heritage Event, we plan to have a one-week food drive in the month of May, and all donations will go to the Elk Grove Food Bank.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Om Shah. I'm a junior at Consumnis Oaks High School, and I'm the Diversity and Inclusion Commission Youth Liaison for the Youth Commission. And this year, once again, just like last year, we're going to have a heritage event along with the food drive. And along with that, we're going to have food, music, games, and vendors, and special performances by youth from our city of Elk Grove showcasing their heritage.
Hello, I'm Jaden Chen, and I'm a senior from Consumnis Oaks High School. I'm going to talk about our scholarship program. Our Youth Commission Scholarship Program is planned for towards the end of the school year, and the goal is to reward outstanding youth in the Elk Grove community. Applicants must be a high school student and residing in Elk Grove or attending a school in Elk Grove.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Manjot Rai, and I am the historian this year. I'm a junior at Consumnis Oaks High School. Thank you so much for listening to our presentation tonight. If you would like to know more information about us, you can visit our webpage or follow us on Instagram. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say how proud I am of all of you. The future looks bright, all of you. I've met with every single one of you over the years and just so impressed with your passion and commitment to our city, your desire to serve. And, you know, you're all doing wonderful work in your own schools through your academics and so on. So just know that we are so proud of you and congratulations for all the work that you do and continuing to engage the youth of our city. Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues or comments?
Just add on, thank you, Mayor. Everything that the mayor said, but also I know some of you are seniors, so we look forward to seeing you back here in June for a very emotional ceremony at that point. But great work to all that you've done so far and continue to do. And thank you, Femi, for all your work in guiding them.
Excited to attend Fun Day, Family Fun Day. So I know the last year, we were doing water balloon fights, so hopefully we'll bring that back this year.
And I was curious, the scholarship that is being done, is that through the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation or is that something separate?
It's separate.
Separate, but it's for college, college-bound students?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And you've done a fantastic job. Great seeing you again. And Dr. Femi, you are fantastic. Thank you so much, Dr. Femi.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, you guys are doing great work. And you were doing great work last year. The veterans are bringing up the rookies and just doing a really good job. And so I want to thank you for that. And everything starts from the top with good leadership from your counselor. In this case, it's Femi. And Femi, you're doing a great job. I want to thank you for working with the Youth Commission and really upping their game. They've raised their game every year, but they're really doing a super, super, super good job. And with the workshops coming up over the next few months are really exciting, especially I like the mental health workshop that's being done because of a lot of teenagers, especially when you look back at my teen years, you want to be in a safe place, a forum where you can actually talk about what you're going through and be in a supportive environment. And I think that's a really good thing to do. So thank you for that. Congratulations. Looking forward to the scholarship, the Fun Day, and all the events that are coming up. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Another round of applause for our youth commissioners. Thank you. All right, next item is public comment. I have four people signed up. We'll start with Travis Castle, followed by Moniquea Brown.
So make sure I get the volume right. Not getting everybody's ears going is good. So my name is Travis Castle, and this is the Path to Humanity. The Path to Humanity is a three-part system. They'll generate $1.5 million a year in Elk Grove alone, with the greater Sacramento area's participation around $18 million. This is per component with 25% participation. It is funded by two sources, business and private. So for any program to work, you have to make it worth doing. And businesses join the program for $40 a month. They get a participation sticker that shows their support for the cause of choice and the ability to add discounts to the discount coupon card. And sorry, still a little crashed, is in my pocket. And this will be profitable, so they can offer like a free soda with any meal and stuff like that. And the participating public will get this sticker as well and the discount card, so you can save money locally. So the first topic is poverty. So this is not intended to create a Portland-style homelessness. We're not interested in having a beacon attract more. In fact, we're going to take care of what we have and be an example for other cities to follow. So this program allows the freedom for the city to say, hey, we have people that are homeless and they need, they're on payment assistance for their leases. Great, we take care of that. They need driver's license, mental health, whatever they need. We can also support outside systems such as the city Sacramento's tiny homes. We say, hey, give us 10 of those, and we'll pay for them, and we're going to put our homeless people in them, get them in there, and then we're going to elevate them out of the temporary housing into permanent housing. So why is this called the Path to Humanity? Well, it's not metaphorical, it's physical. So we can take, sorry, it's upside down. We take this, which is what we currently see, and create an awesome mural of success. The success stories of people who were once homeless are told on this mural, whether it's the flags on the ground or a wall, whatever you want. So imagine if you're homeless and you see a familiar face, like, man, I used to hang out with Jerry, and now he's a truck driver, and he sees his kids, and dude, that's freaking cool. And there's a phone number right there, I can get in the program. So one of the biggest complications to deal with homeless programs is getting people into them, outreach. So this is very powerful outreach. In summary, this will create millions of dollars a year, funding is less restrictive compared to grants. Grants are very hard to get, especially since the city of California is $78 billion in a shortfall this year. Programs are going to get cut. We have to step up and do something. And this allows us to do that. And the next component I will cover how it's managed. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can someone from our city connect him with Sarah Von Trager? We have your information here, too, that you sent us. Thank you. Next up is Moniquea Brown, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen and Women. I appreciate your dedication to serving this community. My name is Moniquea Brown. I'm a proud carpenter of Local 46. I've been a carpenter since 1999. Because of area standard wages, I have been able to afford a home and working on buying my second one. But in order to get these area standard wages, I had to travel outside my area, mostly working in San Francisco, as I also watch many skilled women, brothers and sisters, travel as well. I'm frustrated because I'm seeing millions of dollars of work being done here in my backyard without area standard wages. Big contractors, some out of state, making the big bucks and paying workers that live here, crumbs. Area standard wages mean workers will spend income on goods and services, let's not forget better tax revenue. When workers are paid area standard wages, this is in turn a ripple effect, fostering healthier and more prosperous community regardless of their background or circumstances. Area standard wages, they are a reflection of our values as a society. I ask that you support apprenticeship. I'm grateful for the apprenticeship program. I was able to earn a wage while I learned. I don't have student debt and was able to financially support two daughters and myself at the time. It has given me a high-level skill that I can take anywhere in the world. Apprenticeship contributes to reducing unemployment and creates direct link between education and employment. Apprenticeship also contributes to lifelong learning mindset and so much, and so much more. We have to also consider a lot of these contractors are cutting costs by paying low wages, little to no healthcare, no pension, leaving a problem for the city and the state to deal with. I'm asking that any future development include labor standard with area standard wages, opportunities for apprenticeships, comprehensive healthcare, and a commitment to local hiring. Thank you for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next up is Lynn Wheat, and our final speaker for public comment currently is Kirk Thompson. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to begin by wishing everybody a Happy New Year. And I recognize that there were some disappointments here for us in 2023. One in particular was the downfall of Project Elevate. Well, when we were looking at the town center years ago, I came up with a concept that I thought would work. We were brainstorming, right? And was kind of laughed at. But today, I think it really might work and that I'm going to reintroduce it and hope that you will take it on as our future project. So I've brought the poster here so that you can see it, because I'm not very techie. But I believe what we could do is look at, instead of Project Elevate, Project Recreate. And we could look at designing an RV campground. We could look at designing pickleball courts, shuffleboard courts, senior park, and mini-golf. This would be, it's halfway between I-5 and 99, and I look at this as making us a destination city. We know that we have tournaments here, correct? There are soccer tournaments and that we have our swim events. Well, some of the families now, because of the high prices of hotels, choose to use an RV because they're traveling so much with their young ones. Well, they could use our campground here, and you could look at maybe KOA taking that on. So it would be a source of revenue for our city. I looked into doing some research, spent a lot of time on Google, and found that there are consultants willing to build these. And as you can see by my photo here, there are some RV campgrounds in the midst of big cities. So this could be really economic development for us and using that 20 acres in a way that won't lose so much of our tax dollars coming up with ideas that just don't work. I think this is a good idea. In my research, I found out that the closest RV campground's 18 miles away. So for 10 acres, you can build 100 sites. And of course, if we contract with somebody to do that, that would be great. We could look at putting a little visitor's center. There are so many possibilities. And then I found out more about pickleball and pickleball courts. Do you know that there are several sports figures that participate in pickleball now and that it is just worldwide with a number of tournaments and big bucks to be made? That would really cause us to be a destination city. And you know, one time, we were looking at being like the soccer mecca, we're going to be a baseball mecca, the sports mecca. I think we could become the Recreate, excuse me, Recreate mecca and really, really pull this one off. And this would make us a destination within the county, because I don't believe there's a site that's been developed like this within the county, and I just don't believe it would cost us that much. So with the downfall of Project Elevate, we can now have Project Recreate.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've put together statistics, which I will give this and this to the Economic Development Department.
Thank you.
And I think that they could research it. Thank you so much, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirk Thompson, followed by, I think it's Brian Colson, and spelled wrong here.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. So I'm here today to call on this council to pass a resolution condemning the Lieutenant Governor of the State of California for attempt at blatant election interference and attempted violation of the right of due process of law of an American citizen, which is a violation of the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution. Full disclosure before I get started, I am a registered Republican. I did not vote for Donald Trump in 2016. I did vote for him in 2020. I am not supporting him this year in primaries. None of that matters. The Lieutenant Governor sought to do, what the Lieutenant Governor sought to do is a greater threat to democracy than anything that happened on January 6, 2021. Allow me to explain. The Lieutenant Governor sought to just declare a U.S. citizen to be an insurrectionist without any charges being filed, without trial, and with the accused being denied the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and refute evidence, which is a violation of the Sixth Amendment. Could the Lieutenant Governor just declare any of you an insurrectionist without conviction of a crime or even a trial in order to prevent you from running for reelection or seeking any other elected office? No. Lieutenant Governor also engaged in election interference by attempting to remove someone who meets all the constitutional qualifications to be president from the California ballot. She is every bit the threat to democracy her and other elected officials claim Donald Trump is. She attempted to disenfranchise potentially millions of California voters and thousands of Elk Grove residents by eliminating the ability of citizens to vote for the person they want. On top of that, she further demonstrated her ignorance of the Constitution by saying in her letter to the California Secretary of State that the minimum age to be president is 40 years old. For those of you who don't know, it's 35. By doing this, the Lieutenant Governor is also encouraging the same thing to be done to Democrats in Republican states. Her attempt to remove Trump from the ballot by declaring him ineligible by decree could easily be done to Joe Biden and any other Democrat in heavily Republican states or Republican-led swing states, which is currently being floated as an idea in the state of Missouri. This is inviting abuses of power by state officials all over the country, by members of all political parties. It's such an awful idea that our very own Governor Patrick Bateman, sorry, Gavin Newsom, said this was a bad idea. The Lieutenant Governor is a threat to democracy, not just at the national and state level, but a threat to democracy right here in Elk Grove. For this, she should be declared insurrectionist and removed from office. Okay, not really, just kidding. But it is imperative that she be forcefully condemned for undemocratic ways so the next wannabe authoritarian knows to think twice. I hope this council will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Brian Colson. Final speaker, Randy Becker.
I would like to thank the council members for all the hard work that they put into our endeavors of doing what we need to do and how we need to do it in our little town that we have. And the support from the staff, thank you very much. And I look forward to the 24th. Thank you, guys. Thank all of you. I really appreciate it, and so does the rest of the community. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker is Randy Becker for public comment.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's funny how things end up on YouTube. It's a shame that some residents have taken it upon themselves to try to tarnish residents for trying to do their civic duty and caring in their community. But as I ventured through that, I also seen the first time I spoke on an issue two years ago in front of the Planning Commission. I want to, tonight, I want to personally thank the mayor, the council, the attorney, the staff. It is of utmost importance, whether you agree with something or you disagree, that the citizens have a voice, the citizens have a right, the citizens want to make something better. This isn't about for or against. This is about how we can collectively come together and put our minds and decide how we vision our city to be and that not be taken away from us. What was at stake is exactly that, our voices, the democracy of our city, able to decide what we could do for what was in the best interest of our city, our community, our residents, but also, more importantly, that was lost in all the conversations. What would be best for those that would reside in the location? Was that the best place? Is there a better place? Would we be able to offer better services? Once those people are our residents, they belong to us. So shouldn't we all collectively come together and put our differences aside and say, let's figure out the best place to put something, instead of putting it somewhere that's not going to be successful and put it in an area that's going to be wrong? Let's put the swords down, because I'm telling you right now, from what I've been through personally these last two years, I still got the fight in me. And the best thing to do, for people to do, is let's talk it through. Otherwise, we're just going to continue Otherwise, we're just going to continue fighting, and we're not going to get anywhere. Once again, thank you to all you, Mr. Berman, the staff, mayor, and council. And also Mr. Hobbs. Thank you.
Mr. Becker was our final speaker for public comment. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move on to item number six, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Berman, city manager, happy to report on a few items. This weekend, we celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day with a couple of different items. We have a community breakfast with our vice mayor spearheading that effort. We're excited. It's a sold-out event at District 56. And then on Monday, MLK 365 is organizing a march at Sacramento City College. So we're excited to be able to participate in those events. Want to recognize our Public Works Department for award they recently received related to pavement preservation, pavement management. They've been selected to receive the International Slurry Surfacing Association as a 2024 Agency Pavement Preservation and Sustainability Program Award winner. Big shout out and congratulations for them for their best practices in pavement preservation. The city has released the draft environmental impact report for the proposed new zoo in Elk Grove. The EIR analyzes the potential environmental impacts they're constructing in operation and identifies potentially significant effects in the project. Community is invited to submit comments through February 20. EIR is available on the city's website. Also, hard copies are available at City Hall and the Elk Grove Library. We will be hosting a public meeting on Tuesday, February 6, at 6 o'clock in the council chambers to receive public comments in person. Otherwise, comments can be mailed or emailed to the city. Details are available on the city's website. The city in Explore Elk Grove encourage residents to explore all of the vibrant flavors the city has to offer during Elk Grove's sixth annual Restaurant Week. Download the free Restaurant Week Pass on the Explore Elk Grove website to check out your favorite spot, redeem rewards, and enjoy special deals from January 12 through the 21st. To support the work of our nonprofits serving Elk Grove, the city will open its annual grant application period this Friday, January 12. This grant cycle will provide funding for programs, projects, and events in fiscal year '25. The city will host a technical assistance webinar on Tuesday, January 23 for all prospective applicants. Details about the webinar and the individual grant programs, applications, and deadlines are available on our website. City in Sacramento Steps Forward will conduct the 2024 Point-in-Time Count of People Experiencing Homelessness in our city on Thursday, January 25. This work is essential to secure annual funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Volunteers to support the Point-in-Time Count are still needed. No special experience is required, and training will be provided. Please sign up to volunteer on the Sacramento Steps Forward website. The City of Elk Grove joins the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation in supporting local scholars, City of Elk Grove's scholarship, which will award one student with $1,000. Deadline is January 26. Finally, the city will be closed on Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 5. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Next up is our consent calendar items. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity for consent. I don't see anybody signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Move consent.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is item 8.1.
It's a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the City of Elk Grove zoning map and resolution approving a tentative parcel map for the 8651 Beta Road Map Project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kira Killingsworth, and I'm the project planner for 8651 Beta Road Project. The applicant is requesting a rezone and a tentative parcel map for an existing 10 acres along Beta Road and Mix Lane. There will be no development on this property at this time. Again, the 10 acres are currently on the south side of Mix Lane, on the east side of Beta Road. It's north of Sheldon Road, and the property currently has an existing house that will remain. The Planning Commission reviewed this application on December 7, 2023, and they recommend to the City Council for approval of the tentative parcel map as well as the rezone. There was no public comment, but there were two written comment letters that were received prior to the meeting, and those letters were talked about regarding lighting, potential lighting pollution from future development. The Planning Commission did go into conversation regarding the improvement plans for Mix Lane. And I'll go in more detail later in the presentation. The rezone is for currently agriculture residential, five minimum acres, to agriculture residential, two acre minimum. There'll be four parcels ranging from two acres to 3.6 acres. The surrounding neighborhood on Mix Lane and Beta are AR-5 to AR-2. So it is consistent with the general plan, which is rural residential. The subdivision will be for four parcels, as mentioned earlier, along Mix Lane. Each parcel will have private well and septic. There is a small portion that's within the 100-year floodplain on the northeast side of the property. Each new driveway will be outside of the floodplain. However, due to the moratorium for FEMA, there will be no development on Parcel 4 until the moratorium is lifted. There is no sunset date as of now. But all improvements can happen between 1 and 3 prior to the FEMA moratorium. But again, the Parcel 4 building permit cannot be issued. It has been conditioned that no building permit can be issued for Parcel 4. To give you a little history, there is an existing 30-foot right-of-way easement on Mix Lane. It is, has never been accepted by the county or city. So therefore, currently, it does not comply with the city's standards. There, on the north side of the property, there was a map that was approved by Planning Commission on June of last year for 8633 to do a parcel map as well. And to have these, both maps approved, they will have to do improvements. To comply with the city's standards, they would have to dedicate additional 10 feet for 40 feet on Mix Lane. And again, it'll be dedicated to city standards. And both applicants for 8633, as well as the current applicant of 8651, are agreeable of this and have been coordinating with one another to do these improvements of Mix Lane. There will be a fire turnaround at the end of Mix Lane, which is the east-west section. Just note that the north-south section of Mix Lane will remain private. During the process, the applicant of both maps, 8633 and 8651, did meet with the neighbors of Mix Lane to talk about the two parcel maps. And the only concerns that were brought up was Mix Lane and how it looks now. And they just want improvements. And again, they have been conditioned to improve Mix Lane. And again, there was two written comments, and they were regarding lighting standards, pollution. And staff just wanted to note that there is no development at this time. But if there is any future homes, they will have to go through a building permit process. There are city standards in our zoning code. However, they're for non-commercial multifamily, not for single-family. But it will be reviewed during the building permit process. There were no other additional writing, written comments after the Planning Commission meeting. With that, there's no, and then during the process, the applicant did submit a biology report that noted that there's no sensitive habitat on this property. There are wetlands, but the wetlands just convey minor flows during wet periods. There's no listed critical habitat on site. And then, but they are subject to condition to comply with Chapter 16.30 with a pre-construction survey if they're, you know, find if there was any sort of nesting. But at the time of the biology report, there was no nesting. With that, staff recommends that the City Council find that there's no further environmental review per Section 15183, adopt the ordinance to approve the rezone from AR-5 to AR-2, and approve the tentative parcel map for the 8651 project. That concludes the presentation, and staff and applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now open and invite the applicant to speak. If the applicant is here. Yep, I see movement.
Good evening. My name is Sean Summers. I'm with CWE. We are the civil engineer for the project. Yeah, I've been working with this client for a couple of years now on this. And it seems like a fairly straightforward subdivision. But then, when you get to things like FEMA, it's not quite as straightforward or environmental review. So we've been working on it. I'd like to thank Kira for her hard work and helping us proceed with this. The client is currently out of the country, and so that's why she hasn't been here. But I don't really have any other comments, other than I'm excited to get this going. If you have any questions, I can answer any questions for you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments for the applicant? All right, I'll declare that the public hearing is now closed and look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. And as we know, item 8.2 has been moved. So that brings us to item 9.1.
Mayor, so it has been noted for a public hearing, so we should still open public comment. I don't know if anybody wants to speak. They can. But as you've indicated, the intent of the council is to move this to the January 24. So at the end of the, any public comment, if any, I'd ask for a motion from the council to do that.
All right, then I will go ahead and declare the public hearing open and take the public comment. I have one signed up. Sonia Parker.
Thank you. This is very new to me. Thank you for everything you do. I was here about the housing on Elk Grove Boulevard. Is that what has been changed?
Yes, ma'am. We have a tentative agreement. We're still working through that. So we've continued this item to the following city council meeting if it's needed.
And has a decision been made?
We have a tentative agreement for the relocation. So we are. Yeah, there is a green sheet back there that will explain that a little bit more.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. I've lived here 27 years. I feel like I'm an old-timer compared to when I start talking to these people that have only been here 10 years. I just want to make sure, if it's going to be the next time I will speak then, I'll be calm. This is, this is, this is something for me to speak.
We can, can you read?
Can we read the green sheet?
Yeah, can you read the green sheet?
Yeah, I would love you to do that because that would.
It might help you.
I'd be happy to read it.
Because.
And then I will not take any more of your time, but thank you.
So there are copies at the back of the room, but let me read what our green sheet says. This is a supplemental memo from staff just explaining what's going on. I'll just read it verbatim. "The city has reached a settlement in principle with the applicant for the Oak Rose Project, which would involve relocation of the project to an alternative site in the city outside of the Old Town Special Planning Area." "The settlement is not final. The details and formal settlement documents still need to be prepared and finalized. In order to provide time for the finalization of the settlement and the settlement documents, staff request that the City Council take no substantive action on the project scheduled for tonight, for City Council on January 10, again, tonight, but rather continue the matter to the regular City Council meeting of January 24, 2024. And as the mayor noted at the outset of the meeting and just a moment ago, that would be for the purpose of the lawyers and the parties to finalize the settlement documents."
Thank you for providing that additional clarification. I don't have anybody else signed up for this item, so I'll close the public comment opportunity.
Mayor, I'd like to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of January 24. I'd like to second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And item 9.1 is to receive information, consider a resolution confirming city council appointments to regional boards, commissions, committees, and local and city standing committees. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. The action of this item is to finalize what was set in motion at the December 13 meeting, which was some direction that was provided as council looked at their obligations coming up in the year of 2024, to move around a couple of our seat assignments. What we'd be asking tonight is to confirm via a resolution. And part of that is because our Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District does require a vote of the council. What we do is we consolidate all the appointments under that resolution. It just helps in the communication with all of our regional boards, board clerks, all my colleagues. What we would be finalizing is having Councilmember Robles be our representative to the Aquamud. We would continue to have the alternate being Councilmember Suen. The other actions that we had was with the connector, which is kind of a switch of our representatives. So again, Councilmember Robles would be our director, and our alternate would be Councilmember Spies. All these items for these two new meetings, Councilmember Robles, you won't be having these obligations until the fourth week of January. So it's not until about the 25th, 26th, those are when they'll kick in. But they are early in the morning, so be ready. And beyond that, there is just a kind of a footnote that I'll be putting on for, that I'd request as a kind of an amendment change to the resolution, which is my understanding is that the Sacramento County Regional Sanitation District and the Sacramento Area Sewer District have effectuated the steps. Then in 2024, those two agencies will be merging. What that would do for us from the City of Elk Grove perspective is it would keep our representation, would still remain the same, with our director seats being with Councilmembers Robles and Suen, and our alternate with the mayor. But it's just consolidating those. It changes kind of, they won't have as many meetings. That's the projected element, and it's just part of the process they've been going over through the last year. With that, I'd leave the, any other further direction, if any, council members? Now that you have all the kind of data of all the different obligations throughout 2024, let me know if there's any changes, and we can effectuate those tonight.
I'll open up the procedural. I'll just go through, opening up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I'll close it. And I think we have the changes that we discussed last week, so if there's anything else, I think we're good. So we'll take a motion based on what Jason just said.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Council comments, reports, future agenda items. Start to the right. Councilmember Robles.
Looking forward to seeing everyone at the MLK Breakfast. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for being an amazing host in the city who has been working extremely hard, especially for everyone who's volunteering on this. Hopefully, we'll see several folks out for the MLK Walk on Monday. And then also Point-in-Time Count, that's a very important regional thing to do. And I look forward to being and participating in that. For folks out at home, hopefully to see you there as well, just to kind of see what it is like to go out and count several individuals who are unhoused. We also had our first meeting today at Sac Area Regional Sewer District. And we elected our chair and our vice chair, which former council member Pat Hume is the new chair. So I'm looking forward to kind of working hand-in-hand with him, as well as my colleague, Councilman Suen.
Councilmember Spies.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Suen.
Yeah, just to make folks aware, there's a, at Secog and at STA tomorrow, they'll be talking about joint powers authority that we're forming for tolling lanes. And the first one will be in Yolo County along the 80 corridor, getting from basically Sacramento to the 80, along 80, I-80 corridor. That'll be the first one. They'll look to do ones along I-5 and another, more in the region in the future. But this will be the first. I mean, when folks think of carpool lanes, but there's this. but there's, this will be opportunities to possibly ride in this as a single vehicle, but you will pay a fee, so that'll, that'll be, that's what the tolling lane, one concept of a tolling lane is, so just keep folks apprised of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Participated in my first Sacramento RT Board meeting on Monday with Mayor Singh Allen. It was, it was very, it was very, it was very good. It was, it was a good process, along with, I'm one of two new members, along with Sacramento City Councilmember Myveng, and just recently yesterday, I believe Sacramento City Council member Lisa Kaplan is now a member of the Sacramento RT Board, and I like how we're, how we have a regional approach on how, on how we're trying to address the needs for ridership and accessibility throughout the Sacramento County region, so, good stuff.
Thank you, and as part of Monday's SAC RT meeting, we did approve a light rail station for Dos Rio serving Marisol Village, which is, I think, the largest affordable housing project there, so that was a good, it was a good outcome. It took a while to get there, it was sort of a messy process. You know, we're, we're big on process here in our city, and shedding light on, on process and how to do civic amenities and capital projects procedurally and working collaboratively, which is so important. So, but in the end, it was a good outcome for the community, so that took place. So we're moving on to our adjournment, and I do want to adjourn tonight in the memory of an Elk Grove resident. I attended his funeral this morning. He was 41 years old and died of cancer. His name was Amit Prakash. He was big in the hospitality industry, and cancer got him quickly, and it was just devastating to see a vibrant young man lose his life so early, and it's just a reminder to all of us how fragile life is and what's most important, the people we love, community, our family, our friends, and doing good things in life. So I would like to adjourn in the memory of Amit Prakash, Elk Grove resident. May his memory be a blessing to all those that knew him. Thank you, everyone.
And Madam Mayor, I also have, there's two I'd like to add to the record. Many of you know Chris Hubbard, who was with Consumer's Fire, and serves as one of our deans over at Consumer's River College. His son, Christian, has services this morning. It was definitely a shock when I learned of the news, and so definitely want to send extended thoughts and prayers to Chris and his family on the loss of, of Christian. Also, we also have another Elk Grove resident who, to a lot of people, especially if you serve, if you were around the Elk Grove Food Bank or served on the Elk Grove Food Bank Board, David Simpson passed away over the weekend, and that comes as a big shock to a lot of us because we've always seen him around, and he, veteran, ambulatory, in a wheelchair, but he was always around town, always active, and really cared about Elk Grove. And so, like to enter into the record, both of their, their names as their passing has occurred as well.
Certainly, and thank you for sharing David Simpson's passing. I did not hear that, and I did have the pleasure of serving with him when I served on the Elk Grove Food Bank Board of Directors. He loved Elk Grove, he loved our community, so a big loss to our city. Thank you. Good night, everyone. We will adjourn at 7:10. Someone, please fix that military clock.